Is the June 3, 5 o'clock meeting, regular Board of Trustees meeting. I'll call the meeting to order, Sam.
Mr. Ramoni.
Here.
Mr. Genowine is absent. Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Okay, and Mr. Simko.
We'll stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, any questions on the minutes?
No.
And I'll jump.
No.
I'll move for approval, the minutes.
Oh, second.
Okay, Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Ramoni.
Yes. Any additions or deletions to the agenda? Oh, I didn't see anything.
Uh, nothing.
All right, hearing in the public, nobody signed in for that. And then I guess we'll dive right into the discussion of speed limit studies for Mitch Albright and Savannah Metamora. If you could, just for the, just for the record, the tape, because there's people, there might be people listening in, name, address, and then who you're with, so.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming.
Um, good evening.
Good evening.
Mike Melton, Lucas County Engineer's Office. My address is 6701 Dennison Drive. That's in my house. Anything else I'm supposed to say?
You're good, perfect.
Okay. If you don't mind, I have handouts.
Thank you.
Above handouts.
I have handouts.
This way, as I go through the outline of what I'm going to discuss, you basically can follow along. Do you have any questions? I have a lot of information here, so what I'd like to do for time is I'd like to go through what I have to present to you all today, and then leave time for questions for anybody that's wanting to ask any questions.
Awesome. Yeah, it's great.
Okay. So, I am here today because the township trustees requested that the person that put the speed limit study together for Savannah Metamora and Mitch Albright come and have a discussion. More than likely, come and have that discussion. Not many times I get to talk about what I like doing, so this is, this is great. So, I kind of want to go through what the Ohio RIS code sets up speed limits, which speeds only in the state of Ohio. From there, I'm going to talk about what ODOT requires us to do, and us as in counties, townships, that sort of public government. And then I'm going to go more directly into the factors that went into the studies for Mitch Albright and Savannah Metamora. I gave you an outline, and then I gave you some additional things at the end, but we can talk about that whenever we get there. So, really quick, speed limits are set by Ohio RIS Code 451121, which means that roads outside of municipal corporations are set by Section B5, which sets the speed limit to 55 miles an hour. Section PH1 allows the Director of the Department of Transportation to adopt a lower speed limit based on criteria established by an engineering study as defined by the Director. And now, I'm going to give to the trustees, as defined by the Director is bolded. It is not an engineering study that the Lucas County Engineers' Office develops, it is an engineering study that the Director of the Ohio Department of Transportation has defined as the study for speed limits in Ohio. And then Section I1 allows local authorities to request the Director to change the speed limit based on that engineering study that's defined by the Director. So, power wise with ODOT, as defined by the Ohio RIS code. So, let's talk about the engineering study as defined by the Director of the Department of Transportation. ODOT has a traffic engineering manual, which makes my life super easy, because they've gone through and they have done the traffic engineering, and it is a great resource. Section 12 of that tells us what that study looks like. ODOT has adopted the U.S. Limits 2 program as the engineering study as defined by the Director in July 2024. U.S. Limits 2 is a national program, so it is not a Ohio-specific program, which I think is important to kind of keep in the back of our minds as we talk about the different factors that go into it. It's a national program that was based on research by the NCHRP, National Cooperative Highway Research Program, Platahaken, so basically, it was a cooperative group of experts that came up with U.S. Limits 2 form, which ODOT has adopted as the form that we're required to use. And it's applicable to all types of roads. U.S. Limits 2 considers all major factors to make engineering judgment for speed zoning. It takes into account the 50th percentile speed, the 85th percentile speed. 50th percentile speed is, not to bore people, 50th percentile speed is the median speed that we think about, normal distribution, it's going to be the speed that half of the people are going. 85th percentile speed is the speed at which 85% of vehicles are traveling at or below. Takes into account average daily traffic, which would be the number of vehicles that travel down that average 24-hour period. Roadway characteristics and geometric conditions. What does that mean? That means, is the right of way clear? What I mean, right of way, generally speaking, in between utility poles? If a car were to run off the road, it'd make it back on. Are there horizontal or vertical curves that obstruct stopping sight distance? Can we not see around a curve? Is there a vertical curve that prevents us from seeing something? Looks at crash and injury rates. The interesting thing about U.S. Limits 2 is it only looks at speed-related crashes. So, if the OH1 that the police department puts together does not have speed as a factor in that crash, it doesn't account for this, the study. It looks at the presence of on-street parking, so that's where we start to look at developed versus undeveloped, and the extent of pedestrian and bike activity. And it's important to reference on-street parking, pedestrian, and bike activity as a national thing, right? So, what does high pedestrian highlights look like? Does it look different in downtown Cleveland, downtown Toledo versus Calhoun, right? That's a, that's a difference. So, Mitch Albright, speed limit's currently 55 miles an hour as per the Ohio RIS code. We collected the speed data with a radar counter, which is our most accurate form of capturing data, from Tuesday, March 11 to Friday, March 14. Those were normal days. There was no rain, no snow, no ice, no weird things going on in the township, and school was in session. Speed data was collected at two points, one between Savannah Avenue and Brent Road, and another point from Brent Road to Savannah Metamora Road. 85th percentile speeds were 54 miles an hour between Savannah and Brent, and 58 miles an hour between Brent and Savannah Metamora. So, keep in mind, 85th percentile speed is the speed at which 85% of the cars are traveling at or below. During the development of that process, we looked at speed-related crashes on those sections of roads from 2022 to 2024, which is the most recent full complete three years of data. There were no speed-related crashes in that time period. Mitch Albright, per what U.S. Limits 2 says, is a road section in an undeveloped area. I know trustee Johnson, you had some concerns about that in the township trustee meeting, so I want to make sure, like, I hit on this. Again, important to reference federal nationwide framework versus a localized framework for the study. I included definitions of what an undeveloped and developed areas are in the outlines for you all. Essentially, an undeveloped area is one that does not have on-street parking, traffic signal systems, curbing gutter, sidewalks, street lighting, generally minor pedestrian and bicyclist use. A developed area is an area where it's mostly built up and the natural environment has been replaced with the built environment. Looking at downtown residential area with considerable pedestrian and non-moverized movements, on-street parking activity, numerous driveways, curbing gutter, street lighting. Going down Mitch Albright Road, driving down Mitch Albright Road is quite open, there's wide lanes, wide shoulders. It is developed in the sense that it was developed in Savannah Township. Based on the factors in the user guide, which this U.S. Limits 2 is based on, I don't believe Mitch Albright is a developed area, as the framework is put forward in this, and we can have a discussion on that. Done talking about all of this. U.S. Limits 2 resulted in 55 mile an hour recommended speed limit for a section between Savannah Avenue and Brent Road, which is currently the speed limit. There resulted in a 60 mile an hour recommended speed limit for the section between Brent and Savannah Metamora. The difference in those two sections were that 85th percentile speed. 85th percentile speed in the lower sections was 54 miles an hour, 85th percentile speed in the upper sections was 58 miles an hour. So, 85th percentile speed drives the majority of the result when it comes to setting speeds. Savannah Metamora Road, speed limit is currently 50 miles an hour. That was generalized in 1998. What I mean, generalized, I mean that a speed study was done, it was sent to ODOT, ODOT approved it, and assigned to our school. Again, we collected that data on March 19 to March 21, normal day, school was in session. We collected data at two points in that section of road. I wanted to make sure that we captured as accurately, as accurately as we could, the traffic patterns that were out there. Believe it or not, 85th percentile speeds were identical for each point that we set that, which I thought was interesting, being that our sample dataset was between 1,500 and 6,400 cars per day for three days, and our 85th percentile speed was exactly the same at those points, which tells me people are driving that road at the speed that they are comfortable at, at 85th percentile speed being the same at those points. And no speed-related crashes in that section from '22 to '24. And I ran the initial U.S. Limits 2, which was sent to the trustees as an undeveloped area, which led to a 55 mile an hour recommended speed limit. I ran an alternate exploratory U.S. Limits 2, taking into the consideration of some of the kinds you made, trustee Johnson, as a developed area, which, in my opinion, this doesn't meet the requirements of a developed area, but let's say, ODOT was convinced, or we can convince them that it was a developed area, that still came back at it. So then I selected, in that study, high pedestrian and bike activity. Whenever I selected that, the result of that study was the 50 mile an hour speed limit, which currently is on Savannah Metamora Road. So, we looked at the data, we interpreted the data, we put the data into a study, sent that to the trustees, and after hearing comments in the previous trustee meeting, we revisited that for Savannah Metamora, which, if there was an argument to be made for a developed section between Mitch Albright Road and Savannah Metamora Road, I feel Savannah Metamora Road certainly needs more of the characteristics of what a developed road looks like, as well as high pedestrian bike activity. And it came back at what the current speed limit is, that was generalized in 1998. So, with that, again, I know I threw a lot at you, but I wanted to give you an overview of the Ohio RIS code, what U.S. Limits 2 studies like, and then the specifics with the two roads that you proposed us to study. So, I have, any questions?
I got, I did have a couple of questions. So, in 1998, half those houses weren't even built out there.
Right.
So, and the road that's going down Savannah Metamora is designed for a bike, it's, the engineering on that road is thick enough, from an engineering base standpoint, that there might be a bike, maybe there will be a bike lane put in there. So, we start putting bike lanes through there. So, from Brent to Pace Setter Park, that whole berm on the side of that road is full-depth, stone, engineered pavement, because didn't, years ago, didn't they want to widen that? And they didn't rob one that, something like that? I don't mean to put you on the spot there, but...
I think recently, they put a berm in, yeah.
Yeah, and that, because it's, because it's engineered.
Turned lane.
Right, right.
But it's been over the last 15 years, I don't know when the last resurfaced.
So, I mean, like, just to give an example, Mike, and I appreciate you coming here tonight. So, if, if we, if we used what our land use plan was from 1998, we'd be, we'd be murdered. And I don't mean that in a bad way, just like, we would, it's changed. I mean, we just did ours a couple of years ago. That's thought number one. Thought number two is, what if we did like we did with you guys last year? We took Flannard's Road and we gave Cory Road to you guys. What if we could control that section, section of the highway road and give you another piece somewhere in the township, we could swap it out? Then, then, I guess my question is, on top of that, is, could we then go ahead and control the destiny of what the miles per hour would be on that road?
So, I'm not going to speak in regards to swapping. That's outside of my...
Okay. I'd like, I'd like to do something to consider, right? We just did it last year on Cory Road.
So, again, so if it was township road, it's purely hypothetical, Ohio RIS code required you to perform an engineering study to lower the speed limit on that road. Require you performing U.S. Limits 2 study.
So, those studies that they're taking, are they, are they taking a stu, and sorry to keep asking these questions, Jill.
It's okay.
Okay. These, these, this highway, how many of them go, how many in our, how many in Lucas County are they going 50 miles an hour into a rotary, I call them rotaries, but into a turn lane in the county?
Roundhouse?
Yeah, I call them rotaries, that's what they used to call on East Coast, sorry.
Rotaries. We have several multiple locations that are high-speed entries into the roundhouse.
Interesting.
All right, Mike, you might want to point out the fact that 1998 traffic study used to determine the speed is different from the traffic study used today. Yes. So, that was... Just like, just like in 1998, the speed limit on 475.3, it was probably 55 mile an hour.
To that point, how did you measure the speed and at what time of day?
We measured the speed throughout the entire day. We measured it with radar counters that are set off the side of the road, that are our most accurate form of radar counters. They're our most accurate form of traffic counting that we have.
So, it was a 24/7?
No.
Type thing?
Yep.
Okay. I don't, we can tell her up if you have more questions.
No, I don't.
Okay.
Please.
All right. Just for my information, who is the current Director of ODOT?
Pamela Bora.
Could you just spell the last name?
B-O-R-A-T-E-W.
Okay, thank you. In the discussion of the level of development, you mentioned that you look at speed-related crashes only. Okay. Well, I've lived in that area for about six years now. Would you consider a young adult running into the back of an elderly lady which pushed her into the Village of Twelve Lakes because she was going too fast and didn't see the lady stopping her, slowing to turn?
So, I understand.
I'm just, I'm, is there a definition for that?
The world that I have to live in, that has been passed to me by ODOT, is that it has to be coded as a USS. Is that the correct terminology for unsafe speed down the way you want? I don't know. Okay. USS, which means that the officer that arrived on that scene and took that crash report determined that unsafe speed was the causation of that crash. That is my directive from the Ohio Department of Transportation on speed-related crashes to the...
Was an unsafe speed?
Yes, USS.
So, then that would be a speed-related crash that occurred?
If it's coded that way on the OH1...
That occurred on Mitch Albright.
If, if it's coded that way on the OH1, whenever we search for crash reports, that is the criteria that I can search for.
Okay.
So, if it's not coded that way on the OH1, it, ODOT's side is that it's a speed-related crash.
Okay. This particular crash was not coded that way, or you, or don't know that?
No.
Was not coded that way?
Not. From what we searched between 12:20 and 1:40.
Okay. I'm just trying to understand this, because there's a lot of things that I feel is very risky for the safety of the community. Got time for a couple more?
Sure.
Okay.
I'm here for you guys, I'm not here to...
Okay. Let's see. Okay. The, the other thing about the developed, undeveloped concern is high pedestrian and bike activity. I would be remiss if I didn't say that I think that that is not accurate for the Mitch Albright, particularly, and somewhat Savannah Metamora. As an example, we just had the annual soccer and lacrosse tournament at Pace Setter. I did some research and found out that in one weekend, we had, we can have for that tournament, anywhere from 5,000 to 25,000 people. That, to me, is high pedestrian, high bike, and I know that with Pace Setter there, kids ride their bikes to Pace Setter daily. People walk, try and walk across Mitch Albright from the neighborhoods that are along there to Pace Setter. So, there is a lot of, and there's a lot more houses, a lot more residents along both of those roads. I, I'm just perplexed at how we cannot justify decreasing those speed limits.
So, an additional thing we're just going into that traffic area is a disclaimer that basically says, ODOT will look at the recommended speed that the report puts out. It also states that the speed limit can be no lower than the 50th percentile speed, which is that median speed, rounded to the inner spot. Okay. So, for Mitch Albright Road, from Savannah Metamora to Brent Road, your 50th percentile speed was 53 miles an hour.
Which is over the speed line.
That was, that's a 55 mile an hour second.
Why don't you say, I thought it was 50, okay, my bad.
Savannah Met's 50.
Savannah's 50.
Thank you.
But, which is also too high, I believe. Okay, so I, I'm not even sure how to even ask this question, but the fact that we have schools, church, nursing home, assisted living home, and tremendous growth of residences. Looking at that in this period of time, this current time, how do we, how do we move forward with having this looked at further? I will tell you that I have been in conversation with Representative Josh Williams and Senator Gavirone about this, and they both are of, I don't want to speak for them, my impression was they were both in favor of reducing the speed limit on those two areas. And Representative Williams lives in Savannah Township, so he's very well aware. Is there, is there anything we can do beyond what we've done at this point?
In my world that I live in, let's talk about schools. So, school speed limits are set at 20 miles an hour per Ohio RIS code.
Right.
We set school speed limits based on sight visits that we perform every year. We set those times based on sight visits, when children are actively entering and exiting the school. We then send those times to the school district, who blesses those times. So, there are rules on Mitch Albright Road, but while children are present, those schools are at 20 miles an hour.
What about coming and going to those schools? I'm not trying to be argumentative, I'm just trying to, to clarify...
I mean, Timberstone runs, the school zone planning starts from 7:35 to 8:15. School starts, I believe, at 8 o'clock.
Yes.
So, they're on for 25 minutes prior to the beginning of school. And then, school ends, I believe, at 2:35, so we run that from 2:30 to 3:15.
High school ends at 2, at 2:30.
I mean, and Central Trail runs from 8:30 a.m. to 9:15, and 3:25 to 3:50. And the township recently applied for safe street or safe routes to school money.
Correct.
Which we're partnering with you all on, and we're putting in the crosswalk. And with that, we are extending school zones, both the actual physical zones, so they overlap. And then we're also going to extend the times, so that at all times, that crosswalk, from arrival of dismissal, at all times, that crosswalk's going to be within 20 miles an hour speed limit.
I understand, yeah, I understand that.
So, and then, I understand the nursing home and the development and all those things. At the end of the day, you requested us to perform a study, we have to do the study, as defined by the Director of the Department of Transportation. We collected that data, and we performed that work, and we have it for our... I then went so far as to say, it's a developed area with high heads, and we came to the answer that currently it is a sub there. I don't know what more I can do in my position as the traffic operation supervisor of the county.
Sure.
Here's office.
Hey, Mike, I don't know about you, but on Saturdays, I like to speed, drive around. Have you ever done Saturdays and Sundays, just for, you did, I know you did during the week, but, you know, weekends, have you guys ever looked at a weekend?
The requirements of it is that you are collecting data on a day, so you're collecting that normal, quote unquote, normal day.
This is probably one of the biggest complaints we get in the township. I mean, and Jill's, Jill's spearheading this, and I, Jill, I appreciate you doing what you're doing on this. I just think it's, I mean, I'm talking the whole, every neighborhood, it's probably our number one complaint we get. Correct me if I'm wrong, Jill. I mean, it may be one of our biggest complaints that we get out there. God forbid some child gets run over by a car on his way to Pace Setter, I mean...
I think it's going to happen.
It's been, it's been this way for a while now.
I agree.
2005, 2010, 2016.
Mm-hmm. I'm not capping on here, Mike, I'm just, you're delivering the water, I get it, I'm not here to...
You're the messenger.
I'm just trying to let you know our first, not, you're, you're just the guy up on the pulpit here, I'm just saying, I don't mean that in a bad way, I'm just saying, you know, it's, it's very frustrating from our standpoint, that as a, a local government, we can't control the speed, the, the day-to-day, you know?
It sounds like you're pursuing the correct area, contacting your state route, contacting the Department of Transportation.
Okay. Well, keep doing it, Jill, appreciate it.
Okay. All right, thank you, I appreciate your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Again, I love you both by heart, when you're on the phone, when you're talking to your neighbors. I serve the people who live in this county, not the same capacity, but I serve the people who live in the county. Give them my name, give them my number, have them call me.
And thank you.
That's what my job is. So, thank you.
Appreciate it, thanks for coming.
Appreciate it, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, you guys can leave if you want. You can stick around. Appreciate it, we'll keep moving forward here, guys. Any, Jill, thanks again. She, she keep the hair on this one, if you could, it's important.
I will.
All right, zoning department, come on down, Darryl. Thanks again, guys.
I have one resolution, 25100, authorization for abatement of vegetation. It's the time of year for the high grass violations. We have five properties, four were in season.
Questions, Jill?
No.
I'll offer Resolution 25100, abatement of, abatement of vegetation.
A second.
Okay, caller, Mr. Ramoni?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Darryl. Sarah, come on down.
Good evening.
Hi.
Hi.
I have two resolutions. The first is number 25-101, and it is asking for your approval of an eligibility list, and you'll probably find this confusing because we did this not so long ago. This would be the eligibility list for the non-OPTA-certified candidates that we got in our February application process.
You good?
Yeah, I'm good.
I'll offer Resolution 25101 to certify the eligibility list.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Ramoni?
Yes.
And then the next is Resolution 25-012, asking for your approval to hire two candidates off of the eligibility list, the word wasn't coming to my mind, that you just approved. It'd be Koyurishki and Yajek Gilbert, and these are people... They would be Kojurjki and Wyatt Jeff Gilbert, and these are people that we would hire and put through the basic police officer academy, starting in mid-18th at Lawrence Community College. I am currently fully staffed with the three that you approved the last time. These two gentlemen would be training in basic and field training for replacements, retirements I have in 2026, of which I know about four at this time and are expected. So this would help prepare us to absorb some of those vacancies.
And these two gentlemen do not have experience?
Correct. They have to go through the basic police officer academy. Yes. They don't have the law enforcement.
Okay. I'll make a motion to accept that.
Please, I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Ramoney?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Hey, Sarah, great job with your email on the breakdown of this prior to tonight, so I appreciate it.
Thank you, and I have other information, you know, if you, if you need it, you know, like, or process and how much you get and stuff like that.
No, great job, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Oh, come on down.
Good afternoon.
Hi.
First item under administration is a public hearing for street lighting and roadside platform.
I'll open the public hearing at 5:33. Anybody like to comment, good, bad, or indifferent? I'll close it at 5:33. I'll offer resolution 25-089 to approve street lighting for Brookside Platform 10.
Second.
Okay, Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Ramoney?
Yes.
And the next three resolutions, 104, 105, and 106, are all to accept positions and requests that accepted the hearing on each of these government officials.
Any questions, Jill?
None.
Would you like to make the motion or see it?
Sure, I would.
Change it up a little bit?
I mean, motion to accept the aforementioned resolutions.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Ramoney?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you. Emran, you got a quick one I see here, huh?
Yep, appropriation from an support balance, this is resolution number 45-103, and we have two items in there that the fire department need to, we need to increase the money for the fire department so they can chase the annual air pick and three-year cylinder testing. And then the other item is what is the street lighting, one for destination of the, for street lights for destination of the new subdivisions. That's all. I have that.
No questions?
I'll offer resolution 25-103, township appropriation for a covered balance.
Second.
Hey, Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Ramoney?
Yes. At this point, we will, oh, any open discussions, Jill? Anything besides? All right, I'd like to make a motion adjourn at 5:35.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Ramoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
All right, thanks everybody for coming tonight.